Just some things that I've been involved in in the past two weeks since we last met. I was able to preside over the defining diversity contest award ceremony last week. Basically, students mostly in 10th and 11th grade shared what they thought diversity and how diversity was defined. And it could have either been written artwork, digital media, some students put podcasts together. So really some powerful expressions from from some young people. It was it was rewarding to see. And if anybody missed it, some of this is published via Greenwich Time and also on the Y WCA website. If you'd like to take a look, take a listen, I highly recommend it. Also been getting feedback from the Byram community, especially the Byram Veterans Association. As it relates to the skating rink projects, I've been bringing some of the feedback that I've been getting to the committee. So continue to reach out to me, happy to hear, you know, what the neighborhood and what the veterans thoughts are. So to help the community make better decisions. Recently attended the monthly West Cog, the Western Council of Government meeting on Fred's behalf. One of the things I learned is West Cog is going to be hiring a consultant to help municipalities with the American Rescue Plan Act. So I've shared that information with Ben and the BET as we get those funds and, you know, try to figure out how we're going to spend them. As it relates to the KPIs for the municipality and the planning of conservation and development. We finished two more of the guiding principles, so four out of six. And we meet next Thursday to complete the final two of six. And then we'll be ready to share it more broadly for additional input. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks Lauren. Now we'll go on to Jill Oberlander for her updates. Good morning Jill.
Morning Fred, good morning Lauren, good morning everyone. Thank you for joining us today. The past few weeks have been full of really good events, a couple of promotional ceremonies that you may have read about in the press for fire and for police. So nice to be able to participate in that. Also Fred, Lauren and I all attended the Greenwich High School graduation on Monday, Monday, right, it was Monday. Which was really a joyful day and I want to say congratulations to all of the graduates of our school systems, whether public or private. As they embark on the next phase of their lives. They speeches were really inspiring and I'll come back to that a little bit later in the session. As well as responding to various constituent concerns. And one of the questions that came up was sort of the how we're doing on now that we're starting to open up and whether there's a backlog on inspections and permit issuance. There's a lot of construction going on, so I will follow up with with you Fred and with DPW on some of these questions as well. And sustainability continues to meet, we have a meeting next Thursday and working on our sustainability priorities document. Which will hopefully be ready for presentation to the Board of Selectmen next month. That's it, thanks.
Thank you Jill, and thank you for bringing up the the graduation, the promotion. So it was great to attend those and to be a part of, but also the permit process. We've had several meetings in the last week on this and there's some reform coming. In fact, in one of the departments or division of a department where we've had really a backlog and open ended, you know, answers when they're going to get the permit. The department is really working hard to fix that. In fact, I've gotten two emails this morning about things being resolved, but they're aware of that and they're hard at work at fixing that, resolving that issue. But we want to really address the whole system as a as a whole, you know, in the aggregate. And make sure that all the departments are not working in silos and that they're able to, people and businesses are able to look at the whole permit process and see what it is that they need. And when it's checked off, each department will be able to see that rather than somebody getting all of the approvals. And at the last minute, somebody coming out of left field and saying, hey, you didn't get this and by the way, you may have to wait another six weeks. And it's something that's been an issue for many years and so we're working on getting that fixed. So thank you very much for for bringing that up and for all your work there. Next, we'll go on to old business and we have an amendment to traffic ordinance regarding explanation of the parking citation appeal process. And we have from Parking Services, Luanne Bellantoni. Good morning Luanne.
Good morning all. Yes, I'm here as to present this under old news. I initially proposed this on earlier meeting and there was some concern or question about the legality and the terms that we were suggesting. Violent binding regarding the decision by the parking hearing officer. So the town attorney, Ms. Amina Ahmad, we worked closely on that. And subsequently, we removed those two terms. Those are the only two terms that there was some issue with. So I believe, I mean unless you want me to revisit, I can, you know, we highlight things, but I think those were addressed. So what we did is we removed that terminology from the proposed amendment.
Thank you Luanne. Any questions or comments Jill?
Thank you and thank you for revising. The proposal does read very clearly now. I'm just, it still sits a little, I'm still a little uncomfortable with this transition. I'm just curious as to whether this process, the telephonic hearing and notification process is being done in any other municipality. And whether you whether you got this language in this process from any place else or whether this is sort of a first impression, a new new program.
Well, um, we did look around and surprisingly, our neighbors to the north and south have their own ways of doing it. And so basically, we would be setting a precedent by doing it in a telephonic manner, which has worked wonders for us. We looked at the Sanford system, which, I mean, we already got them beat where their first go round is that the people in the office make the first decision. On whether, you know, the validity or whatever, make a decision. And then if USC complaint don't like it, then they take it up to an independent hearing officer. So I thought, well, that just didn't even make sense to us. So I think this should be one of the times where we should be on the forefront and set precedent where, and this is pre-COVID. So if you can imagine if we were to put these people on hold, as I said in the prior meeting, we were already six to nine months behind due to antiquated system that I revised since then. We are now on point. So at most, you have to wait a couple of weeks to have your vetted appeal hearing, you know. So I think it's worked wonders and with the dedicated cell phone number, so the appellant knows caller ID. I mean, it's, and the fact that also the hearing officer is not disclosing their decision on, you know, on the phone or in person. We then deliver that by email. It cuts down on a lot of issues and we've actually been lauded by the respective hearing officers thanking us. Because otherwise, it would just go on and on and argumentative and they couldn't get to the other, you know, complainants on the roster. So I would still like to, you know, of course with your approval, continue this, which seems to be working even post-COVID, pre-post-COVID, it's working like a charm. I would like to continue this telephonic means of conducting appeal hearings.
Right. So just to clarify, just to understand it, so nobody else is doing it purely by telephone, right? They have
Not that, not that we're aware of, no.
Right, right. And there's no exception process worked in to this, right? So that if somebody misses the online, the period for an online request 15 days after the issuance of the notice, that's it, right?
Correct. But that's not something new. That's also akin to if you don't pay your citation within 30 days, it doubles within 90 days, it triples. So those are standard practices. That has really no bearing on the appeal hearing process itself.
Right. And if somebody has difficulty with the online notification, what's, what are the options for them?
Well, we've had people who don't have an email address and they're free to come into the office and we work with them to fill out a paper document. And at that date and time, we we schedule it then and there. We actually just had one come in last week, so we pull the opening and that's what we do. So if they can't do it online and then also they would be called. And then, of course, since they don't have an email or something like that, we then would call them the day, the next business day after the hearing and say, Mr. Smith, this was the rendering by the hearing officer.
Okay, so you have a process, although it's not specified in your proposal to amend the town ordinance.
It happens, not even one tenth of one percent, but if you feel that we, you know, we should do that. But I mean, 99.9% of people have no issue putting, you know, submitting their request for an appeal.
Right, no, I recognize that. I'm concerned about that small percentage of people that are
Well, we address it properly. I mean, if you to put everything that we do in an ordinance, ordinance would be, oh my gosh, you know.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to be clear on how it gets handled. So you have, do you have a policy document that then identifies what happens if somebody comes in for assistance with submitting the online?
Yes.
Request so that you're you're parking and you're maintaining sort of a a presence at Parking Services where the public can come in and ask for help.
Oh yes, of course. That's our job.
Alright, so, and then the process now, I guess this is to Barbara or Amina. If we approve this modification, does it need to go to the RTM or is it just accepted?
Is Amina?
Good morning, good morning, members of the Board of Selectmen. The answer to your question, Ms. Oberlander, is you would approve this ordinance. You are the final approval authority as the traffic and parking authority for the town. So it does not need to go to the RTM.
Okay, and does there need to be, under penalties, any language specifying the exception process that if somebody does come in to the office, they can file on paper? If they don't have an email address?
So from what I understand from Ms. Bellantoni, the department works with individuals who have that issue. If your question is, should it be written into the ordinance?
I'm wondering whether it has to be written into the
Oh, I see. I don't think so. Again, from what I'm hearing from Ms. Bellantoni, it's a very rare situation that that might happen. So I, as long as the department is able to handle it and speak with individuals and work with them. I don't see the need to specify that in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you Jill. Lauren, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. It's good to hear that sped up the process and that it seems to be working very well. So thank you Luanne and thank you everybody in the department for doing that. So we're ready to to vote here. Is there a motion?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the amendment to the traffic ordinance regarding the explanation of the parking citation appeal process.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you Luanne and thank you Amina. Okay, next up, we have an old business. Deputy Chief Craig Gray on the proposed parking restrictions and regulations on North Street, North Street between Lita Drive and Maple Avenue. Chief, good morning.
Good morning, everyone, to the board. This is my first time presenting, so I'm looking forward to it. And thank you very much for the confidence in putting me in this new job.
Happy to have you.
Thank you. The, you know, I would tell you this as the first time that I'm presenting, this proposal started well before I got here. It was done by Deputy Chief Marino and with Jim Michael. So I know it's gone before the board once. I provided some information. I have it present and prepared to answer any questions you have. My current knowledge, which is limited to some of the previous accidents that have taken place before. I believe that Ms. Oberlander had asked a question. And so if you were to total them up, there's relatively few accidents that have occurred in that area. I also provided, I have some crash data for the larger area on North Street. North Street is one of those areas identified by the Police Department or our step as a, an area where we have the top crashes. Actually, North Street itself is the number one road. If you look at some of the notable intersections also, you'll see that two of them are also on North Street in the lower section. That would be North Street at Parsonage as well as North Street at Gray Hampton. I did speak to Jim Michaels about some of the actual scope of his sightline evaluation. But if you have any questions regarding that, you'd have to ask Jim.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks for sending over that data. I have heard from a couple residents there who are in support of the area. I have not heard of anybody against this. One was a phone call and one was an email. And maybe Barbara can stop me if there's any more, but that I've seen just two and they were in support of this. So I don't know of anybody who's actually come out in the last two weeks against it, taking this action. But certainly, as you said, it's, while there's been relatively few reported accidents in this particular portion of the road, the road as a whole is one of our more unfortunately busy thoroughfares when it comes to accidents. So I have no questions at all on this. I was ready to vote last time and I, we have again heard from a few people and they were in favor of this and not against it. So we certainly were waiting to see if there was what the the response would have been. So I'm, from my point of view, I'm okay to vote yes on this, but I want to hear my colleagues, their comments and questions and thoughts. Jill?
Yeah, thank you Fred and thank you Deputy Chief. I, the last time preceded your appointment into this position, the questions raised were about the accident. Since there was an assertion made that this was a safety issue as well as sightline review, which we now have. But some of the discussion is useful just to alert the people listening, residents and also for the media coverage when they make a decision like this. So thank you for providing the backup. It appears from the materials that are, that were provided, which should be posted with the the meeting and materials so that people can see that most of this area has restricted sightlines according to the town policy of what what should be available. The review was done from many driveways along this this route. And I, I guess the the question that I would have going forward post this action is, you know, if we were to do a similar, I know, similar kind of review for many of the locations. We probably would have restricted sightlines along many of our roads. So so that's just something to think about as we educate people on driving throughout town and speed. And I can say from anecdotally, from personal experience, that people are very rushed these days. And there's a lot of traffic and a little bit of road rage perhaps. So perhaps one of the things to think about going forward is a little bit of a public education campaign on some of the safe driving principles, slow down, pay attention, look for cyclists, we're going to come to that in a, and pedestrians, we're going to come to that in a minute. But I did want to highlight that that the restricted sightlines review was done. That there doesn't seem to be the accident reports arising from parked cars in this vehicle in particular. But so that that wasn't really the motivation for the change. So that was really it. I'm prepared to vote for it.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I'll echo Jill's comment because I know in the last meeting, I made a comment about the way that you navigate a three-way, four-way intersection with stop signs. So I do also believe we need some public service, some public education. Because I think that contributes to some of the challenges in that intersection. That's the feedback that I received in email after making that comment. And like Fred, I haven't received anybody opposed to this change.
Thank you. I would agree. I think that we need to have a broader assessment of the whole town. It's good that we're taking this action now, but I think there's some other problem spots that we may be able to get the word out to people and just, you know, not only educate, but also get some feedback. And some, some of the residents in the various districts, sections of town get their feedback too. So, okay, is there a motion?
Say one thing.
Yes, Chief.
I made note of the comments from the other two select persons about getting some information out. I'll talk to our Public Information Officer and pushed out some, some of those basic details. It's a reminder, we do do it regularly as is, but we'll do it again.
It's even important, like on Greenwich Avenue. You know, it's applicable to, and even like getting into a traffic circle, like Lake Avenue, I noticed that was a air crash location. Silly stuff, but important.
It's just reinforcement. We'll do it. Safe driving habits, absolutely.
Not silly if you're the the person hit, actually, right? So, yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, is there a motion?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the proposed parking restriction regulations on North Street between Lita Drive and Maple Avenue.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your work there. Okay, last item on old business before I get to new is, select person Oberlander with the discussion on the Board of Selectmen nomenclature. Jill, the floor is yours.
Thank you Fred. So I'd like to remind everyone that we first took this topic up in December of 2019, one of our early meetings. Really when we were just first appointed and a thanks to resident Allison Khan for for bringing it to our attention. In the year and a half since, at the time, by the way, the way we left it at the time was that we would have a further discussion on it. And of course, then COVID stepped in and things went haywire. And now, given the past year's focus on diversity, equity and inclusion efforts, as well as the fact that this is Pride Month. I thought it was a very, very timely opportunity to bring back up the discussion. At, in 2019, the three of us all opted for different titles. Brett, excuse me, opted for selectman, Lauren opted for selectwoman, and I opted for selectperson. As I explained at the time, that nomenclature, the way we refer to signaling is an important method of inclusion. That if, if by having gender neutral titles, if if we can signal to our residents, to young people, that we, that there's room for all. That one does not have to identify in a particular way to be a member of this board, a member of this community. People can see themselves and aspire to to this position and to indeed a governing role in our community. And, and it's empowering as well. Given all of the conversations about inclusion the last year. I thought it's really worthwhile to take a look at at some of the, some of the other titles that in recent years have changed from gender specific to gender neutral. It's now we have designations such as police officer as opposed to policeman, firefighter as opposed to fireman, head of school, chair or chairperson as opposed to chairman. And many other titles similar to that, which will not differentiate by assigned gender. There are a couple of other things that that struck me this morning as I was thinking about what I was going to say. And one was the remarks at the Greenwich High School graduation by the senior class president to look to, as, you know, sort of encouraging her classmates to look to their values. To in in their futures. And Greenwich has a values inclusion. That's something that we've taken seriously and that we're working towards every day. And what better way to signal and look to our values of inclusion than by changing our nomenclature to represent that inclusion? Second thing that struck me was actually the Greenwich Time this morning, both in their insider email and in Claritivs Need Haves column about about critical thinking and about analytical thinking and the idea of being a little bit uncomfortable. And I, I think as a person, cisgender person who hasn't had to confront the difficulty of identifying outside of traditional nomenclature. It's hard to understand the impact to somebody else. And as I wrote in my, my, my memo. And one of the discussions we had in 2019 is that it is a little uncomfortable if you're used to a certain title and it doesn't roll off the tongue to change. But I, I don't see anything wrong with a little bit of discomfort, and I don't think it will last very long, to to adopt a change that doesn't threaten who one's identity at all, and it just allows people to feel more, you know, more included in our, our community. So I asked that the board votes to change its name from the Greenwich Board of Selectmen to the Greenwich Select Board. And I also vote to change individual titles to the gender neutral title of selectperson. And in thinking about it this morning, I think Fred, for you in particular, you would then become the chair of the Select Board. Which arguably is a term that is easier to understand from the public and people that don't actually live in a Greenwich community that has a board of select or selectboard or selectpersons. And I would even go as far as work to change our titles to give you the title of mayor as opposed to first selectman. So you could be the mayor and the chair of the Select Board. And the supporting members could be selectpeople, selectpersons and members of the Select Board. That is, I'm asking for the two of you to support me on this effort to signal our value of inclusion and to vote in favor of that change. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you Jill. Yeah, you're right. This was, this was, I think, our first meeting back in December, December 12th, I believe, 2019. So Allison had reached out to us, so, yeah, and we said we would, we'd continue discussion. And I remember I said at the time that if the, the electorate, the people of the town, you know, wanted to go to something else. We would have to absolutely listen to them and consider it. I, it's an interesting proposal. In part, I think right now we are doing part of what you want, which you're suggesting, which is where you're known as something, Lauren's known as something else, which I thought, and I'm known as not something else. But I thought that was long overdue. It was kind of silly calling a selectwoman, selectman, and it was done for a long time. And I agree with you that sometimes it gets uncomfortable, but you get used to it and then you forget all about it. So you're, I agree with you 100% on that. But I think we need a little more discussion on this and maybe get some feedback from the public. I don't have any objections to, you know, I don't see anything wrong with a selectboard or a mayor terminology. I do have some questions though, concerns about you know, the use of pronouns and maybe requiring that from our town employees for lots of reasons. You know, some people may not want to be identified as anything, right? Some may, some may be, you forced me to think about something I never think about, but so I thank you. But they may be in the middle of a transition and not sure, not ready to to declare. And so I just think you're, we'd be forcing their hand, maybe in an unintended way. Putting some discomfort upon people. So I'm not in favor of that part of this, you know. And certainly if we want to be gender neutral, then we don't really need those pronouns anyway. So definitely not for that, but certainly all ears. And I think maybe I want to listen to Lauren's and your ideas about maybe throwing it out and seeing what people think about some of your thoughts there. Lauren, do you, your comments?
Jill, I don't think, and thank you, yeah, agreed, it was our first meeting. And then I also think back too, because you and I were asked what we wanted to be called. So our So our signs outside our doors both do say selectwoman. I think it was as we were getting like our business cards and all of our, you know, paperwork. And I appreciate, you know, the thought that you've put into this and, you know, designating your title as a selectperson. For me personally, I felt the leap. I was like, I was so excited to be called woman versus man. Like, I didn't think to go to that next level and, you know, be gender neutral. So that that's really why I chose woman as my title. And I don't think the pronoun part is part of what you're suggesting at the moment. It's just the, you know, what we call our our Board of Selectmen. I haven't gotten a lot of feedback other than that initial meeting that we had when we were first elected was to not go the mayor route because mayor in a lot of people's minds signifies city. And we're we're not a city. We, even though we're a large municipality, we're not a city, we're a town. And then the rest of Fairfield County, their nomenclature, you know, whether we say Board of Selectpeople or the Select Board, it's still consistent with that. You know, a Darian or a New Canaan, regardless of what they do, they're not, you know, going to that mayor format. So that that's my only thought there. And again, I I'd like to hear more from the public, you know, I'm I'm learning, I'm spending time listening, you know, talking to younger people and and getting, you know, sort of their input. And like you said, Jill, their values, you know, and not just even in, you know, our community. I think I've shared with you, you know, I my niece lives in California, so a little bit more thoughtful as it relates to these types of conversations. So I've really appreciated, you know, learning more. I am personally not opposed to having a gender neutral, you know, board. So Board of Selectpeople or Select, the Select Board.
I think the Select Board has an economy of words. And once you get used to saying Select Board, it's it does roll off the tongue. But yeah, selectpeople is a little wordy.
Yes. Yeah, I I I think Select Board is easier for sure. I'm still thinking about myself. I don't I don't have I could go like either way on the individual title is where I'm at at the moment.
And it could be. And I, yes, to respond to that, I did not include the pronouns in this, even though it was in my initial request to meet the deadlines for the submission and to write a cogent and persuasive piece, I I need a little bit more time. I'll revisit on the pronouns. Happy to socialize with you on that first. I think it it takes questions out of out of discussion as opposed to adding more questions into discussion. Again, recognizing that when one represents the way they were born, it's a lot easier discussion than for the people who don't. But in terms of individual titles, you know, one could also become a member of the Select Board. If if selectperson doesn't resonate, I do think that as as it starts to become a little bit more common, and I thank the the press for, they've been generally really pretty good right now in reflecting all of our individual titles. I think it becomes more commonplace. You'll find that there's, I believe, less discomfort. And I think this is a real opportunity to lead actually on our values and 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 what this town stands for. I I hear you on the desire to hear from the public. I just recognizing that change is always uncomfortable for people. But this is a change that is in keeping with a lot of other nomenclature changes and one that I really encourage you to adopt and lead on.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's figure out maybe offline about how best to engage the public and and get their their feedback on it. You know, it took me probably a couple of months to start getting used to calling you guys different things. I was messing up there the first few meetings with my addresses. So yeah, it does. You do get used to it after a while. So.
Chair of the Board. It's been a year and I don't believe you've made any kind of errors since then. So see, doesn't take too long. And and Chair has a very nice ring to it.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I no, it's certainly a worthy discussion and we're keeping our word that we'd revisit it. And so maybe we'll circle back offline in the next coming days. So we have something to report back on in two weeks and see where we are. Maybe we could have something scheduled, you know, to to get the public's feedback and how to do that. I have some ideas in my head right now, but I'll we'll we'll talk about that, you know, later today or tomorrow.
So I'd like to know, Fred, just because my request was specifically to ask for a vote. And I hear that the two of you are not ready to for a vote. I don't want a vote that's going to fail. I'd like a vote that's going to pass, but I don't want to put it off indefinitely. So I just ask that we actually take a vote on this proposal sometime. We're at the end of June, let's just say by the beginning of September. That should give us enough time to figure out how to reach out to the public and.
That's plenty of time. Yeah, no, that's plenty of time. That gives us some time to figure out how we want to get out to the public and get the feedback and then we'll be ready for a vote. So I I think that's very, very reasonable there.
And and happy to take suggestions, maybe even from our young people on what the appropriate title would be. Mayor or Chair of the Select Board or both. So and I'm going to continue calling us the Select Board so that you get used to hearing it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's good discussion and we'll we'll keep on that. Next up, we have a new business. We go over to we first on the docket is the Milbrook request for a special exemption permit for a July 17th special event. And we have the Milbrook GM Scott Koster with us. Scott, you on with us?
I believe he is in attendance.
He is now. Okay. All right, so we heard last time from Scott on this. Or was there was two things, my correct, Barbara, that we spoke about last time with Milbrook?
I'm at the special meeting last Friday. It was for an event that's happening this evening.
Yes.
This is for an event that's happening next month at the club.
Do we know if this, you know, this is an annual thing. So they've done that. They do this every year. And the music doesn't go past 11:45. Has that always been the case? Do we know? Because I don't want to do this. Sorry.
Historically, yes. And from what Scott, Mr. Koster had explained at our special meeting on the 18th, that most of the attendees for the July 17th clambake are actually residents of the Milbrook Association and are members of the club.
Yeah, I think I remember that. He said that only one neighbor he hadn't gotten a hold of. But he's asking here for an hour and 45 minutes, hour and 45 minute variance. I thought it was a little less than that. I'm just wondering if that's pushing it a little bit too much. The ordinance usually is 10 o'clock curfew on that. I'm just wondering, just thinking out loud, is an hour and 45 minutes pushing it for somebody who may be not wanting to hear loud music? I mean, it's one, it's a one off event. So I mean, that's that's a good thing. But I don't know, just me, I'd like to hear Lauren and Jill's thoughts on it. I mean, I'm okay for a variance. I don't remember if it was an hour and 45 minutes. Maybe Lauren or Jill remember.
Well, I think it was it was two different events. So the thing that's happening tonight, it was like a just in case. If all of a sudden they want to do like, you know, play one more song. This seems to be something they've done annually. So I don't I don't know that we can compare the two requests.
Well, since Scott's not on here, I mean, I'm I'm okay with with granting it. But if we get negative feedback, then we'll know our answer if we're here next year for this. I just wish there was some people here that could speak to it.
So Fred, I don't know whether you know or Barbara, whether you know, he had indicated this was an annual event. Do you know what historically has it been till live music till 11:45? Or is or was it did it typically end earlier?
Historically, from my perspective, what we are aware of is that they asked to cease by 11:45 to give them a little bit of wiggle room for perhaps, as Lauren mentioned, one more song, the encore kind of situation. We did not have this request last year because of COVID.
Yeah.
But in previous years, this is this request mirrors previous years requests for the special exemption. And we have not received any negative feedback here in the office of the first selectman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I mean, if we, that's enough for me. And again, if we do get some negative feedback, we can revisit it the next time. We, you know, talk about it if we're here. But if historically, we haven't had any negative reaction to it and it is a one off event, then, you know, I don't I don't see the harm in it. And they had, they were pretty good about the the that when he that's going on tonight that they like Scott came to us with two weeks ago, very, you know, they were really sensitive to the to the plight of their the neighbors there and the not only just in Milbrook in the Circle Drive, Morningside Drive area. So I I'm okay with it. If Lauren and Jill are, then we can entertain a motion.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Milbrooks Club request for a special exemption permit municipal code 6B-8 for Saturday, July 17th, 2021 to host their annual special event.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo says yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up, number three, the actually number two on the new business docket is the establishment of a bicycle task force. And I will present that. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, I I met on a Sunday recently with Bob D'Angelo and our friend Ernst, who is on here today with us to go over where we are, where we've been past attempts at at moving the ball down the field. And from my perspective over there is it things movements start up and then they kind of slow down and sometimes go away and then they get restarted. And I know we were seeing if we can get a grant to look at possible bike routes. The reason why I suggested this is because I think whether for money aside, grants, possible grants aside, I think if we, if you want to have the discussion, then we should just do it and and get going on it and not not waste any time. And whatever grants may come, great. But if not, it shouldn't really hold us back if people really do want to see some movement on this. We, as I've mentioned over and over again, we do such a great job in this town on walking paths and hiking. I'm a hiker, so I'm very happy. We have over 800 acres of open space and we're working on more. So we're doing great there. The issue with bikes, obviously, is you're sharing the road with vehicles, motor vehicles. And unfortunately, that could be, you know, very, very dangerous, especially with, you know, the advent of cell phones and people being distracted by many things. It's you have to put a little more thought into it. And we've been meeting, we've met several times down the last few months, Jim Michael and and Bobby and Ernst and, you know, different meetings with different people, just to see broad ideas, what we could do. We had a closing road roads off in certain parts of town for a few months in the summer, like they do over at in New York and the it was the Bronx River Parkway on Sundays, which I used to go to years ago. Doing things like that, but also how do we, even if most of our roads are not, don't meet the federal requirements widthwise, could we do something, you know, an abbreviated version of it, you know, maybe two and a half feet for a bike? Or at the very least, putting some type of notice down on the roads just to remind drivers that they're sharing the roads with the people who may be on bicycles. So there I think there's some things we can get done. So I'd rather just get going with this and have people on this task force really do their research and suggest things and present the ideas to us to to go over, discuss, vote on and implement. And we have some really good advocates here in town. So I just wanted to throw it out there and get the discussion going today. So I know Jill's been a part of that since the beginning here. So I would look to and hope that she would be a leader on this one too. So I'll throw the floor up.
So Fred, can I, I'm I'm just curious. So thank you for putting this on the agenda and inviting some of our town advocates who have been very active on this issue. As as you noted, I am a big fan of of both safe pedestrian access as well as cycling access and improvements. But I'm just curious what the goal is for this task force. It would seem that a lot of what the task force is going to work on and recommend is something that one, you already have the power to do. So I just, to be clear in creating this task force, what do you hope? What is the purpose? What's the mission? What's the goal? And because if you want, it, you know, it's a we had a lot of discussions two years ago about committees in name versus committees in purpose. There would have been a proposal for a bike study to implement a lot of these proposals. It wasn't included in your budget. Like, where does this fit in in the priority scheme?
It wasn't included in the budget for a reason. But this here, I personally don't have the time, Jill. I I would need help on this to to do the research and see. We haven't done all the research yet. That's my point. We, you know, every time I meet with people like Vinnie DiMarco, who was doing this 30 years ago. I don't know all the possible roads. I every time I meet with a bike bicycle advocate, they're not even sure of all the possible roads. I met a friend at the gym who's a trainer, who's actually, I think, in the 72 Olympics. He was part of a task force in, I want to say 20 years ago. And he said, I didn't even know it, but he said there was already a little route around Binning Park that was approved. I don't know if it was by the Parks Board or by the Board of Selectmen like 20 years ago, or it was presented to them. These, there's, there's a lot of loose information floating around that I'd like to tie up. And I'd like to get a task force that would be dedicated to doing this, seeing what we can do and where we can do it and grabbing some of those ideas that have been floating around and getting real information. And, you know, maybe doing some research and seeing how other towns maybe that don't have the proper width on their roads. How do they do it if they have some? Some towns do. Florida does a really good job with it. The roads are wider. So I want to see, you know, the blueprints. They're out here in the Northeast where towns have the similar limitations that we have. But, you know, I agree, you said that, you know, I have the power to. I just don't have that time. It's 24 hours in a day and I would really need a task force, just like we're doing with the Energy Committee. They're really going to be presenting some great things there and and they're doing great work. And I couldn't have done that on my own. So anytime there's a committee or a commission or a task force proposed, it's to do work and to to see how we can not only move the ball down the field, but to see what can be done. They may come back and say, you know what? It's too big of a haul here. And and that's okay. I just want to know what we can do. And if so, how we're going to get it done and when we can get it done, rather than just talk about ideas and then have it die away, die down or go away, fade away and then brought back again the next time somebody has the urge to bring it up. So I think it's a way of pulling everybody together, formalizing something and having them meet, you know, once a month, twice a month and report back what what have you found? What have you discovered in your research? What are you presenting to us? What can we do? I I don't know all those answers. I know some of these things I've heard for 30 years. But I I really need to have a group dedicated to really looking at what we can do. And I know Ernst was on here and he certainly felt the same way that there's some some things we can get done, but we're going to need a good effort on it. And I think this, I think this is the way to way to go.
Let's just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that you yourself are doing the brainstorming about bicycle paths, although happy to go on a ride with you anytime you like. But there are departments that do report to you that have the capability and and capacity to do this kind of work. It's included as a priority in their in their workload. And I note that Jim Michael's on and I thank him for the hours of conversation that he spends on this topic. I know Lauren has her hand up, so I'll let her comment as well.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Jill. I know. And we we've given them so much work in the last couple of years that and Jim's been great even on on this one too. But even with that, there's only so many hours in a day for these departments and they're working on so many different initiatives. And they will help us, but to have a to have a dedicated group of volunteers that are passionate about it, I think it is the way to go that can present to the departments and say, you know, uh, Jim, can we do the, here's what we found that's being done in Westport or Ridgefield. What do you think? You know, we have, we, we've identified these venues in Greenwich that we think can go, you know, and, and present it to Jim. This way, some of that work's already been done. And Jim, you know, can continue working on the many other things that he does. So that's the whole reason behind it. But Lauren, I see your hands up.
Yes, my question too was, you know, because this is connected to work that um, departments, you know, could be doing. And, and I think, yeah, the extra assistance and the, the volunteer effort would be certainly helpful. Um, I have two questions. Who would oversee this task force that was a, a town employee? Like, what department do you envision? Would this be Parks and Rec? Would it be DPW? Um, and then also, what is our commitment to the recommendations um, of the task force?
Since, you know, I proposed it, I would be willing to be that one to report to, which and then report to the board. But in the task force, I would have a member of representative from DPW, a re- representative from the police force, a representative from uh, DPW, Parks and Rec, when I say police force. Um, and uh, even uh, and Megan, uh, somebody in, in risk management there as part of the task force, just to um, be there to answer questions and, you know, maybe not doing all the, the deep dives and, and to, to all the research, but to be a part of it. So they're not, you know, they're able to, I think, expedite the process and, and be there to answer some questions. Uh, rather than them doing all the work themselves. Because again, they, they're doing a lot of work and a lot of projects around that, as you know. And so, uh, any help we can give them. And when, in this case, we have some really passionate uh, bicyclists that uh, are, are eager, eager to help. And so if they're eager to help, um, I'm certainly eager to uh, to assist with this and uh, make this uh, make this a reality. Ernst, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, first of all, I'm very, very grateful that um, the support that we've received from the three of you, that this got tabled today, but the many, many helpers around town. Uh, I've gone, I've been a bit involved personally, a bit more over the last four or five months. And I noticed that communication is now flowing better. Sometimes the process is very, very complicated because clearly where there was good reason and justification that certain areas like the Mayanus River Bridge, the railroad bridges, the underpasses, traffic lights, sequencing, police, what are the rules? Do we find? Do we not find? Are we allowed to bicycle on sidewalks or not? There's just lots of issues and some of those are very, very long-term projects. Some of them are medium terms, some of them are shorter term. And I think generally, the public awareness of what it really takes to make changes or to make improvements, whether the processes and so on, there is a very, very significant communications need. And to have a partnership between the different, whether sometimes it's Department of Transportation, whether it's at our town level, whether it's with other not-for-profits that have similar goals and have proven themselves, or those that, like me, are much more strongly focused on bicycling itself or pedestrian safety. There's just really a chance for the community to talk to one another and help uh, one another. So really, from my perspective, I would very much welcome such a task force that could focus on bicycling and could then be a coordination and a support function to the various areas where then formal improvements or formal work and that these type of issues are going to be needed. So very, very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernst. Appreciate all your work you've done with this and constantly reaching out to us on many different issues. So uh, again, thank you. And I see Vin DiMarco's on here. I know Finn wants to weigh in. He then was the first person I remember going back again, probably in the nineteen eighties, that was a really a a, a leader in this along with Bobby D'Angelo. So I don't know if Vinnie wants to uh, to add anything here.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, Ben.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Thanks for the opportunity. And thanks, thanks for bringing this up and uh, Ernst for, for making this happen uh, from the beginning, asking for. Uh, sure, task force sounds like a great idea. I, I want to go back to something that Lauren had asked, and what is our commitment to recommendations? Um, I, I would like to see that, that the task force also um, focuses on um, what the, you know, how the town can make a commitment to becoming more bicycle friendly, not just recommending uh, improvements. Um, it, because the improvements are going to come once there's something behind them. Once there's some, some uh, ordinance. Um, we talked a lot about, over the years, about the complete streets policy. And I don't know, Fred, whether you, whether you were involved in voting for that uh, on the legislature. Um, probably twenty years ago, or close to twenty years ago. Um, Connecticut did pass the complete streets law. Um, and which requires that, that uh, all um, um, state-owned roads uh, have to be considered for bicycle and pedestrian, all users actually. Um, and it, and a lot of municipalities have adopted that, um, the in ordinance or a uh, uh, some, some form of, of uh, ordinance, I guess it is. So, so the discussion that Ernst said was, you know, this is an opportunity for the whole town to, to talk to each other about this and decide how we want to move forward. Uh, yeah, it could be an opportunity to do that, but I'm afraid that the task force uh, needs to have some kind of uh, public discourse besides just uh, the Board of Selectmen. Um, and, and, you know, maybe, maybe that's up to the task force to do that also, uh, is, is to get uh, a buy-in from the public. Uh, because we, you know, we can recommend all these uh, individual routes or even bicycle plans. And of course, you know about the Bicycle Master Plan that, that's been sitting for twenty years. Uh, and, you know, very little got done with that. We, we're proposing now to, to consider another bicycle plan. Uh, you know, update that or, or consider another one. So i- it, those things have to be approved at some point in time and, and the public will have to weigh in. So, so I, you know, one of the things that the task force I would like to see do uh, would be to uh, develop a, a proposal um, for an ordinance that, that the town, that the DPW would follow whenever it, it does any work. Uh, right now, it's sort of a voluntary thing where DPWs, you know, we kind of nudge them a little bit. Hey, can you put a bike lane in here? Can you widen the road a little bit for, you know, better pedestrian access? Uh, you know, while they're doing a, a, a project. But if it becomes part of their um, job to, to, to make sure that all users can uh, you know, access safely, uh, access a particular road or intersection, then I think it's, uh, it's more productive that way. If there's something behind it, if something chartered about that. Um, wonderful to see that the, the new intersection on, on Greenwich Avenue, uh, you know, giving, giving better safety to, to pedestrians and, and even cyclists too, because it slows everybody down. Uh, that's the kind of thing we need to do. And, and hopefully the task force can, can delve into uh, you know, best practices or what other municipalities might, might have already done uh, in the state of Connecticut, uh, right here in Fairfield County. Um, so, so that, so that isn't just about, uh, where can we put bike lanes and all that? But how can we make it a bicycle-friendly town?
Thank, thanks, Ed. You, you brought up some good points there. I mean, the original bike plan from twenty years ago or so um, needs to be looked at. And that would be probably the first place a task force could start. You mentioned the state roads, where there's only one state road uh, in, going through town. Um, and even that, you know, some towns are, it's a little bit wider in certain places. Um, we don't know, you know, certain spots, you know, just say over the Dave Tyce Bridge, right? It gets really narrow. So how would we deal with that? Um, it's not, it's not that easy. It just because, you know, we passed a law that allows for it on state roads. It, it may not be possible in certain parts of our, our, you know, our state road that goes through here, the Boston Post Road. But that, you know, suggestions, that's what this, you know, part of it is, what can we do? What can't we do? What are the obstacles we face? And having a, a task force to take a deeper dive into it would be great. And you mentioned, like, you know, uh, not just having the Board of Selectmen do this, well, the task force could have, do what we do, which is have a public forum. Uh, you know, with Zoom option, it's great, but as we now are opening up, you could do it in, you know, in person um, and get some feedback, get some ideas. Um, I was told in two thousand nineteen by uh, uh, a developer here in Connecticut, uh, you know, always listen, because you're going to hear better ideas than you even thought. Maybe your idea, but you're going to hear even better ideas from people uh, that you hadn't even think of. So, you know, having a public forum where people could come and offer suggestions or, you know, Greenwich has people who come from all over and settle here. And they may have done this in other towns and um, have ways to deal with our limited ability to uh, install bike lanes uh, throughout our uh, sixty-seven score miles. Uh, so certainly, you bring up some good points, and I think the task force should certainly can uh, can look into each one.
On, on that point, Fred, if I may, and also to quickly expand on Lauren's point. I think it's just very important that in terms of how the town is positioning itself in terms of availability and communications. Um, we have amazing recreational offerings in town from the parks and many other things. So if somebody looks up Greenwich online or comes and visits Greenwich and we type in bicycling, bicycling resources, it's not really clear where to go. And to Lauren's specific point, if an issue comes up and it's somewhere between DPW Conservation Commission, Planning and Zoning of Parks and Recs, for the general public to understand where to best go or how these things come together, I really think a task force would help.
Okay. Alrighty.
Fred, um, just two additional points. Um, it, it sound, and Jim, I don't know whether you have a, a camera. I actually just had a question that just spurred my thoughts. Um, one of the things that I noticed, I think it was this past weekend. Um, some of the key intersections in an east-west route that people may ride are um, I think on Sunday more than all weekend, just on Sundays, not on Saturdays necessarily, the, the lights are sensor-based. So that in order, specifically the um, uh, exit four bridge, um, crossing over into Bruce Park. I think if, if the vehicle isn't um, there, the light doesn't change. So uh, a motor vehicle, excuse me. So if you're there on a bicycle, actually looking to cross and you want to follow the traffic signals, um, you actually have to, and there isn't a vehicle around, you have to uh, run through the, the light, which is precarious, even for experienced recreational riders. Um, so I would ask that, uh, so in the context of the discussion and to this whole point, I, and Fred, you said, I, I wouldn't mind leading this up. I'd be happy to lead it up, but I don't want to spend time on an effort that's not going to be fully supported by the administration um, to come up with or to compile even, because all of the, many of these suggestions are already out there and we've already been talking about them, but to compile them and advocate for them, but just to have them not included in a work plan. Um, it is um, not necessarily a fruitful use of any of our time. So I, if we're going to have a, a task force on this, an official task force, I agree and thank Lauren for those comments that similar to sustainability, where Pat Sesto and I are co-chairs, that there be a designated co-chair from the town to have some departmental accountability and that um, that you as as Chair of this Board, Chief Executive and/or possibly a Mayor-to-be of this community, um, sign on to support these initiatives and uh, advocate for them so that um, we're not just repeating the efforts of the last twenty years. Uh, and that we're actually making full progress, both for um, the safety of, of residents currently who ride, but also for the future as well.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Jill. And I agree. And that's the reason why I want to do this, because there's too many questions out there. And, and we, we're just not there yet for, for this. And I have, you know, when I hear that there, we, our roads are not compliant with federal regulations, yet I don't want to slam the door and say, no, that's it, we're done. I want to see if there's a possibility to get some here. And then this is the way to me to do it, is to, to focus on it. And we may not be able to do everything we want to, but we can certainly, there's got to be some low-hanging fruit. We've already, again, with Jim's help, talked about certain things we could do here, closing awesome areas for a time being when the weather's nice. But I'm thinking a little bit more long-term and maybe a little bit more year-round. Um, but again, even the one state road where we're allowed to do it, it's not possible in certain areas. So um, or it just becomes very dangerous. And I don't have those answers. I don't think anybody here has those answers. So I think, you know, if no one wants to do this, that's fine with me. But I think there's enough bicycle enthusiasts here in, in Greenwich that they would welcome this. And, and certainly, anything that's presented that's doable would have my full support. Uh, but I just don't have all that information. And I think, uh, to Vinnie's point, looking at uh, that plan that was done about twelve, twenty years ago, um, is a good place to start, see where that has to be updated. Jim may have seen that and Jim, you know, may have some ideas too on it. But um, I think it's, it's a, it's a good start. And so we can um, you know, I could, uh, you know, establish it now and, or we could revisit it in two weeks. But I just think from my point of view, it's, it's the way to go. If we really want to get something uh, going and see what exactly we can do, where we can do it, and how quickly we can do it.
Um, I'm, I'm fine to establish it. My questions were answered. I wanted to know who would participate from the town as a co-chair potentially. And again, what our commitment was, because the last thing, you know, I was wanting to see is work being done and nothing being done with it. Now, clearly, you know, s- setting expectations, we may not be able to do everything. There'll be all different reasons why something can't be done. But the clarity and the understanding as to, you know, what could be done in a phase one, two, three, whatever, you know, approach. And, and I agree first on the communication is like extremely important.
No, I agree. I, I think that's well said. Just knowing what we can do. If we can't do it, I don't want to waste time on it. I'd rather focus on things we can do. But there may be ways to, uh, Jim had mentioned some things, some out-of-the-box thinking um, with ideas that we possibly could do here. So um, I think the sooner we get this started, the better. Um, and then we'll see what we can get done.
While we're having the conversation, um, you know, some communities have, um, at least the city does, you know, bicycle lights, right, that are attached to your traffic signals, that would give a bicycle a clear indication of when they can go and drop, when they, and I don't know what the the riders participating think about those. But I was trying to figure out whether that would particularly on Route One provide a little bit more safety for some of the difficult turns um, for riders. So, and, and Jim, I don't know whether that's too in the weeds, but um, uh, or not for this discussion. I guess I'd rather come back to you and, and see who would you envision? Which department would you envision being the co-chair or chair of the task force?
Thank you. I, I didn't even think, know about those lights for bicycles. So that's something I learned here. Um, you know, again, I would have, you'd have to have uh, DPW involved. Um, you know, Parks and Rec, just by virtue of what it is, uh, risk management, again, and our police force, uh, just you know, which, you know, enforces regulations on our roads. I think they all have to be involved. They don't have to be the chairs, but they, they should be involved with it, because eventually we're going to have to work with them. And they may, they have some information already on a lot of this stuff. But having um, you know, having this task force there to do, again, the deep dive on all of the possible issues and, and look for possible, um, you know, answers and resolutions to perceive problems that we may have and limitations, I think is a good thing. But I, the, the departments I named already, there may be some other ones, but those are the ones I would absolutely have involved, because they're, they're, it, it, each, there's a component of it that involves each of them. And we have to be very careful, as we put risk management in there, because this is not hiking on our trails. This is, this is a little bit more dangerous. So it's going to take a little bit more thought. Again, we're not, and we're not in Florida. Again, we're not, and we're not in Florida where they have wider roads. It's very easy to do it down there. It's not so easy here. So. Good, Jim or Ben?
That's me again, if you don't mind. Okay, so, so the departments you mentioned, I think we all agree that, that they all need to be involved. There's other departments, maybe Planning and Zoning, you know, even, even social services could be involved in, in that. We're not talking about recreational cyclists necessarily here. We're talking about people who may be, may be able to use the bicycle as a mode of transportation as well. So, so we're, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a town-wide, broad-reaching effort, I think, making, making the town more bicycle friendly. Okay, so, so those are departments. You mentioned that, you know, this is a volunteer force, task force. And so there will have to be volunteers, there will have to be members of the public involved in this. How would you go about getting those members involved? And where would, where would they come from? My suggestion is that, that there's already a group, Pedal Greenwich, Ernst, Bob, myself, there's several other people already involved in that. I think you're aware of that. Those people are, are, you know, might want to pick, pick on us or find out who, who could be involved there. But certainly Pedal Greenwich should have a, as an advocacy group, should, should have a seat at the table. I also think that, that there's, it would dovetail with any pedestrian safety or even ADA people such as your, your ADA group, that, you know, all, all these things need to dovetail because we're all, we're all vying for, for space on our roads or perhaps alongside of our roads. There's only so much real estate. So, you know, those are, those are suggestions. Something else, I was, there was something else in my head and I can't remember what it is. But what all this is about is, is, isn't just, when we say bicycle friendly, we're really talking about safety. This, this all came to a head, as in many other towns, because of COVID, where, where there were so many, so many kids with, you know, new riders on training wheels in the middle of the road last summer. And it's scary, you know, and it, and it continues to happen. There's, there's a lot of kids in my neighborhood down in Pembroke, Glenville area. They're riding with abandon and, and it's, and it's, it's scary. So, so the, the task force needs to tackle that too. The education piece, connecting with parents, connecting with, with communities, neighborhoods. Hey, hey, look, we really want, we really want you to be able to ride and we're going to try to do something about it. But, but understand that, you know, what's going on here. So, so there's a lot, a lot of work that the volunteers need to do. So hopefully you'll have the right people, you'll ask the right people to, to get involved in that.
Yeah, thanks, Vin. We could circle back offline and I can get, I agree with you. And maybe set up a meeting with, with that group. I'd be interested in doing that.
So Fred, would this be like a first selectmen's, you know, bicycle task force committee that you appoint the, you know, non-employee members to? So like reimagine, like maybe how sustainability started or diversity or the youth one? The reason why I ask is just as, as relates to snack, like would all three of us approve members of the task force? You know, would snack involve?
Yeah, I just thought, envisioned it just as a first selectman and eventually our first selectwoman's committee that could be continued. I'm not, I'm not looking to make a lot of work for people. I just wanted to get the ball rolling on this. And, you know, again, happy to, to do this and happy to, to meet with Pedal Greenwich. Vin, hopefully just send me a note after the meeting. And then, and then establish to pick the task force, align them with the department heads or representatives of the departments I've mentioned before. And have them get at it and so we can get going on this. You know, all the people I spoke to who are enthusiasts like the idea. But again, I don't know exactly the reason, the main reason we're doing this. I don't, with all that I know and all I don't know, there's still more, a lot more that I don't know. And we're getting that now from everybody. A lot of people still who have been involved with this for decades don't know all the answers. That's why we, I think this task force needs to be put together and, and let do, let, you know, let them be on their way to do some work and research and, and, and work with us and, you know, implement whatever we can. And if there's something that's just not doable, then I'd, I'd like to know it so we, we can go on to other things that we can do, rather than always having this uncertainty year after year after year. So that was the whole reason and.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, so, yes.
So Lauren Raven, I motioned that we establish the, your current title, First Selectmen's Bicycle Safety Task Force.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but why bicycle safety task force as opposed to bicycle task force?
I was trying to emphasize what Vin brought up. I could drop safety from it, but to emphasize that this, the overarching objective is to create safe ways for people to bicycle. But I'm fine to drop safety out of it.
I, I think it's not yet, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to create a task force. I don't think it's exactly defined what, what the goal and mission or even leadership is. So I'm, I'm happy to, to vote on it, although we don't really have a defined proposal of who's on the task force or, you know, what, what its mission or goals or, or really. So I, I don't want it, I don't want to start off by limiting it to.
Safety.
So of, of safety, I mean, safety is critically important, don't get me wrong, right? But, but if we're looking to change the way we view bicycling as, as a transportation throughout our community, then.
So I will change the motion. Lauren Raven, I motioned that we establish the First Selectmen's Bicycle Task Force.
Jill Overlander, I'll second that. And, and first selectmen is just sort of the, in the method of keeping it out of snack as opposed to it being a.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just to not slow it down to get it, get it going. Always revisit it later, but all those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
One, one question. Can we, can we change that title to the Select Board's Bicycle Task Force? Just in keeping with our conversation today. And it's just a start, might as well. I would, I would approve a Select Board's Bicycle Task Force.
Where we maybe, we could always change that in September if that's where we're going. I think right now, let's just keep what we're suggesting. So I, I think, you know, that could be changed eventually. But I would just, I would leave it as First Selectmen right now. And then if you want to change it later on, if that's where we go in September, I'm okay with it.
I'd be happy to serve with the Select Board's Bicycle Task Force. About that.
Well, I'm going to work on you. All right. Anyway, well, all those in favor?
Were you just waiting on me? Lauren Raven, yes. Jill Overlander, yes.
Camilla, yes. And I will get working on this. And again, as far as the name goes, we can change that in September if that's where we want to go. All right. Thank you very much. We have just two more items and then on to our next. Next up, we have the appeal of an ADA grievance regarding accessible parking redesign at Elm Street and Greenwich Avenue. Alan Gunsberg is with us waiting patiently. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning to the Select Board. And how are you guys today?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you so much. I, I'd like to go through a few things, but I'd like to start by putting into the record my background. I've lived in town for over 25 years. I'm a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a resident. I'm a citizen. I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a Greenwich Lion. I'm a volunteer in town. But I also suffer, well, I don't suffer. I also have a rare, very rare disease that causes blindness, deafness. And I travel with a guide dog. I bring that up because traveling with a guide dog is different than ambulating with feet. And Fred, in my Facebook feed, I saw that list, this week that you had visited Fidelco a few years ago and had taken a blindfold walk. So you understand that you're no longer a person with a, a guide dog, you know, walking. You're now a person and a third when you're walking down the street because your guide dog is out to your side and you're a little wider than the average person, maybe closer to a wheelchair. So when that happened, I, I, I became an advocate. I studied what, what was out there in the way of the law and what, what, what rights I had, what, what civil rights I had that were given to me by the federal government through ADA, through Title II, especially as it relates to local government. So the, the question at hand is, it, it is, it is a tree warden statute, which was started, which was passed in 1949. So it predates the ADA, which is 31 years old. In my discussions with legal scholars and even Mr. Camillo in, in the Greenwich Sentinel said that federal law stripped out local law. The U.S. Department of Justice agreed with me. The State's Attorney General agreed with me. So in reality, when we talk about ADA and we might even talk about trees in the sidewalk, those trees do not belong to the tree warden. He has no right, he has no standing and he has no place to rule on them. So that's the starter. We've had three, three interactions with the tree warden. One of them is almost a year old. That's the first one, which happened on Sunshine. I realized that the sidewalk was not built correctly. I made a complaint to the Department of Public Works. They decided that they needed to make the change, but the tree warden got involved and he put a, he put a tag on the tree and had a hearing. What came out of the hearing? Well, we extended the project. We expended more cash that the town has. We increased the cost of the project. And I was unlucky enough to go through one of the most ableist towns that I've ever been in, the town of Greenwich, where a person after person after person that was brought to the meeting that the tree warden set up, came from the tree conservancy and talked about how more important trees are than the safety of people and how more valued trees are than the safety of people. We went through that again on Elm Street, where the tree warden again extended the project, cost the town more money and, and actually moved the spot from the best spot it could be at, which was catty cornered from the other one to make it easier for them, for everybody with a disability. He decided that we couldn't take down the tree or we could, but we were going to have to replace it with many more trees. And somebody else decided to sue, which I thought was ableist also. And somehow the town decided that they could negotiate my, my rights, my federally granted civil rights were being negotiated, not by me, but by the town of Greenwich in regard to that tree. The third one was the stadium. And again, although the tree warden didn't touch any of the trees, inside of the parking area, he made, he extended the project. He extended the cost. He stopped the project. He, he's added cost of, of multiple trees that have to be added in. And once again, I'm dealing with the idea that people believe that trees and trees in the road are more important, more important than people and people's safety. Alexa off. Finally, you know, we get down to qualifications, you know, and, and we have an issue in this town. You know, we've worked very closely with the Department of Public Works. We have engineers there that have gone to four years of school plus. They're engineers. They study how to make things work. This is what they do. We, we, I, I can't tell you how many people questioned me about Elm Street and said, what, what are we doing? The town of Greenwich never does anything that nobody else has ever done before. This is a, the, the crosswalk that we built there is standard operating procedures in many large cities. We, we are not on the bleeding edge. This was built by engineers who studied and went to school and looked at best practice. And they're the ones that need to be in charge of whether or not obstacles need to be removed from the road. So they're the ones that have studied ADA. They're the ones that understand what it says in the access board. The qualifications to be a tree warden is to go to class for eight weeks in a row on a Wednesday night for three hours, not an engineer, not an architect. And I would say that his idea of what ADA is, might be very closely aligned with what Bill Eifroos knows. So I'm coming here today and I'm asking for a policy. And, 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 and I want to tell you why we need a policy is because I wouldn't be here today without a policy. Dr. Barry and I wrote this policy for ADA grievance four years ago. And without a policy, government doesn't run. We can't ad hoc every single moment and try to figure out who we're going to involve in order to make things work and to follow and to be in line with the federal statutes. So I'm asking today that we remove the tree warden from any discussion further on that has to do with Title II ADA access and that we strictly put that in the hands of the ADA coordinator and the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Sorry, I muted myself. Thank you, Alan. Just before I make any comments, let me look to Lauren or Jill. Do you want to make any comments or ask Alan any questions? Okay, Jill, I see your hands is up. Floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Alan. Thank you for your many years of service and advocacy and indeed education for so many of us. Again, sort of similar to my remarks earlier, it's very hard to see people, things, to get out of one's own perspective and see things from other people's perspective. And I think that your efforts, both as a member of the First Selectmen's Committees and also as an outspoken advocate, allows many of us to understand a little bit better. Not perfect, of course, but a little bit better of what it, circumstances. And, but I want to be clear actually to under, make sure I understand as, as we move forward to evaluate and decide on, on your request. I just want to make sure I understand what it is you're asking for when you're asking. So you're appealing from a decision. Are you asking us to decide on that decision? You're asking us, that would be a yes or no. Are you asking us for a policy going forward that will set out a structure for, under which? So that's point two, a structure for which projects that might impact on accessibility, a process to be followed for that consideration. And then point three, are you asking that in developing such a policy should be agreed to that? Point two, that that policy. Point two, that that policy excludes the tree warden from the discussion of ADA access? I, I just want to be very clear so that when we respond, uh, we know what we're, we're responding to. You're, you're on mute, okay?
All the projects are done, so I'm not worried. I, I don't think we need to go back and, and revisit the projects. Yes, I'm asking for a policy. I'm asking for a policy and then a procedure, like we should when we run government. And yes, I'm asking for the fact that, I'm not asking, I, 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 I'm, I'm reiterating the fact that the, that the tree warden has no jurisdiction over trees entitled to access. Because the tree warden law was, was, was put into effect in nineteen forty-nine and the ADA law is newer and a federal law. So the tree warden should not be involved. He doesn't bring value. Our, our engineers at DPW have been fantastic, as Fred has said before, with the design and the build at Elm Street and, uh, other projects that we've been together on, uh, whether it was the, the, the rebuild of the fully accessible pier at the end of Steamboat Road. These guys are, are pros. They, they're not out there to build something that doesn't work or, or that doesn't fit the, I'm sorry, Lauren, just let me finish. It doesn't fit what the ADA says. They know the law. They know how to use the access board. And they also know how to bring in people to help them if they have a question. Go ahead, Lauren, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I was just signaling to Fred to call on me next. Jill, did you still have questions?
No, thank you.
I'm trying to understand, um, because in this particular situation, and Alan, you mentioned, you know, that tree was going to be removed and it wasn't until, um, people wanted it to stay that the tree warding was involved. So I'm just asking a clarifying question and, you know, maybe somebody else can answer because I'm not as close to it, but it seemed to me that the tree warden was inserted because people wanted to protect the tree. And we were going to remove it and then they appealed the decision. So I'm just trying to get, when does the tree warden get involved? Um, is it from the beginning on the project? Or is it because somebody wants to protect the tree?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know how, how that works because, you know, I, I'm not an employee and I don't know what the procedure is and I'm sure Jim Michael can let you know. The question really is, should you be protecting trees that, that, that are in the way of Title II? Do those trees actually have a place to stay? It's Title II. It's a federal mandate. It's my civil rights. Do they really, do we, should we really put a red sign on them? Or should we just bring in the bulldozer? And I believe we should bring in the bulldozer.
Hi, Fred, this is Greg.
Thanks, yeah, I was just about to call on you and also, um, Jim and get your thoughts and even our, our town attorney to weigh in on it. So, uh, Dr. Kramer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Fred, thank you, everybody. Um, I would just like to have, make a few comments. Thank you, Alan, for joining us today. Pertaining specifically to the tree on Elm Street. I had ruled for that tree to be removed. I want that to be on the record. That tree was ruled to be removed and a lawsuit ensued and thus the tree remained. So I want that to be clear. That's the way that unfolded. Trees pertaining to the high school project, uh, any tree that was in the ADA accessibility construction areas was again approved to be removed. Uh, I'd like that for the record as well. And the tree on Sunshine that I ruled to remain, engineering and DPW did a fantastic job making those accommodations to keep a very old significant tree and reach ADA accessibility requirements. And I do believe that needs to be consideration and, and collaboration as these projects move forward through, through eight different agencies and through the public. Um, and look at these situations in a case by case basis to, to suggest bulldozing trees without any consideration from the tree warden. I just think it's inappropriate.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, Dr. Kramer. The, um, have, living in that neighborhood where Sunshine with that tree was, uh, DPW did do a great job there and achieved what we needed there. There, you know, ADA compliance, but also did save a tree there that the neighbors, uh, you know, came out in favor of too. So, uh, that, that worked and that was collaboration. So, uh, uh, there's a case where I thought it worked. And again, I, I walk that every day and I think, I think it worked, it worked out well. Um, before I turn it over, I saw Alan, I think you had your hand up.
Look, talk about Sunshine. We, we lost a parking spot. Uh, it costs more money. And, and oh, by the way, Fred, listen to the recorded, the recorded Zoom call a- a- and even bring Steph Cowie on this call and listen to the way we were treated. Listen to the talk that, that was opened up because there was a red sign put on the tree and how little value, how little value the people in town with disabilities were treated in that meeting.
Okay.
The talk of the town.
Number one, when was that, Alan? And, and because I don't know if I was on that, that Zoom. Okay.
No, but Jim was there and you can elevate Steph Cowie, who might even be on this call. She was there. We were the only two disabled people. And really, it is a beautiful job. But it, you know, what happened there was, was so demeaning. A- a- and, and I recommend anybody listen to that Zoom call. And listen to the, to what was opened up by putting a red sign on a tree. A- a- and the vitriol and how important the tree is and that it would be okay if I walked in the street. And, and all the different things. And, and I'm talking about mothers with strollers who couldn't go by, kids on bicycles, kids on, you know, it's, it's a whole safety thing above and beyond what, what's prescribed by the ADA. And, and really by, by the, the act of putting the red sign on the tree for removal, it opens up everything within the town that, 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 and the kind of talk that, that, just unacceptable.
Okay, thank you. Again, I, the, the project, as you said, did, did turn out really well there. And the parking on that street is, is always questionable anyway because it's not a big street. Um, so I think that ended up for the better there. But certainly, um, getting the information out there and thank you, Dr. Kramer, for clarifying some of that. Um, you were correct on, on what happened over at the other two places. But, uh, uh, I'll open it up to, so Alan, you're basically, you're asking, just for clarification before I ask the, the town attorney. We're not voting anything now. This is just a, you know, an adult first discussion. You're asking basically to remove the tree warden from having jurisdiction?
So, so look, well, let's talk about a, 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 an option, okay? The, the, let's say we move up and try to do the same project that we just did on Elm Street on Lewis Street. And, and there seems to be some issues with access and with the way we want to design. Uh, and, and, and Jim and Jason are working on the design work and, and they've looked at it a bunch of different ways and talked to different consultants and they realize that things have to be moved. They would consult, in my mind, the ADA coordinator. And then they would remove the obstacles so that we could be in compliance with Title II of the ADA.
So thank you. So, um, I don't know, Barbara or Amina, uh, if somebody wants to, uh, the, the question would be, with the, the system we have here with the tree warden and with Alan's suggesting here is that, basically, if I'm hearing you correctly, that Alan's suggesting that the, the verdict of DPW be final and not open to, no?
Talk to the, we have an ADA coordinator in town. They wouldn't just do it on their own. They would sit down with the ADA coordinator and they would talk about the project and they would talk about the access. That's why we have a coordinator.
Correct, but you're, you're suggesting though there would be no room for the tree warden in the discussion?
There really isn't, Dan.
Okay, then that, that.
Can I ask a question? And then maybe I'm gonna, um, so I'm going back to, okay, there's no tree warden, a tree has to be removed. Could the same group of people that brought the lawsuit bring a lawsuit regardless of a tree warden's, um, involvement? And we lost the lawsuit and had to save the tree? Like, so could that still happen regardless of a tree warden being involved or not?
In my, they'd have to take that to federal court, not to, not to local court. And, and, and it's a federal, it's a federal issue. It's not, it's not a local issue.
How did they win the lawsuit then?
If I may, um, uh, so I'll, I'll start with your question about the lawsuit. Uh, the lawsuit was brought, uh, because the state statute gives people, uh, the right to appeal from any decision of a tree warden. So that lawsuit was filed in state court by several individuals, uh, who were plaintiffs. They sued the town and the tree warden. Uh, that lawsuit is still pending in court. So it hasn't been won or lost yet. Uh, what happened was they brought the lawsuit, uh, and then, uh, initiated discussions with the administration and with DPW, uh, to see if there was some way of preserving that tree while also, uh, doing a redesign of the project. So as, uh, Mr. Kramer said, his decision was to, um, remove the tree. Uh, and so they brought the appeal. And then during those discussions, as the lawsuit continues, uh, to remain in state court, uh, that there was a, an agreement reached that we could preserve that tree. DPW could redesign that portion of the project and move the parking space in question to a different location at the same intersection while still being in compliance, uh, with, with ADA standards. So that's what happened. The lawsuit, uh, remains. We have not, um, finalized that settlement because again, during that process, Mr. Gunsberg initiated, uh, the, the appeal process under the town's ADA grievance procedure. So as soon as we found out about that, uh, we put everything on hold uh, in terms of that settlement discussion and finalization of that agreement. Uh, so that's where we are in terms of the lawsuit. Um, I had suggested that we let this process play out. Allow Mr. Gunsberg to, uh, exercise his rights under the procedure that the town has put together uh, so that we don't go into court and try to resolve that case while this procedure, uh, is playing out. Uh, so that's, that's the answer on the lawsuit. Um, I'm trying to remember, I know there were other questions.
If somebody without a tree warden.
Yes, so the authority of the tree warden, uh, Mr. Gunsberg, I believe, uh, and I've been trying to take good notes here. I'll go back and listen to the recording of this meeting as well. But I, my understanding from what Mr. Gunsberg has said so far is this project is done. He also referenced some other projects, but really this is an appeal, uh, with regard to the Elm Street tree. So, so it's, it's done. Uh, but what he would like to see is some sort of a policy that the town would adopt whenever there appears to be, uh, a situation where there are trees and then there's ADA access issues. So when that situation happens, how would the town deal with it? And, and I want to go back to the beginning of this meeting where, where the first selectman, uh, in his remarks, started out by talking about, you know, putting together a procedure where every department, when there's a request for any type of a permit, every department knows what's going on so that it's streamlined, so that at the end of some permit process, somebody doesn't find out that, oh, well, we didn't go through this extra step, right? So that's how I think the first selectman explained that process of the procedure that he would be trying to implement townwide. And I think this would fit into that very nicely. Um, so for example, if DPW is designing another intersection and there are trees that might have an impact on that design, then, then, and I, I think the ADA coordinator also mentions this in her decision, you really have to coordinate with everybody involved, whether it's Mr. Gunsberg's committee, um, DPW, the ADA coordinator, as Mr. Gunsberg said, get everybody to the table. But I don't think you can cut Mr. Kramer or the tree warden out of the picture completely. Because there is a state statute, and I will talk about the state statute and the ADA as well. Uh, there is a state statute which, um, requires certain things of the tree warden. But then we have the ADA, right? So it's, it's a federal law and we don't disagree that federal law would take precedence over state law where there is a conflict. But the key, key terminology is where there is a conflict. So you can't simply cut out the tree warden out of a process. I think there has to be a, a collaborative process, coordination. Uh, but if it turns out that a, a particular tree in question, um, if it is allowed to remain, will have such an impact on the project that we would, in, in any way, shape or form, not be in compliance with the ADA, then I think that's where we as a municipality have to say the ADA comes first and we need to provide access and without removing this tree, we simply cannot do it. Uh, but, but, uh, it can't be just a cut the tree warden out of the process type of a situation. I think it has to be, uh, some, some collaboration. And certainly, uh, I think it has to include, um, the, the ADA coordinator, assuming that we're talking about a situation where there is an ADA issue in conjunction with a tree removal or keeping a tree there issue. So, uh, I think Mr. Gunsberg is asking for the town to put together a policy and that's certainly, again, you know, will take direction from this board. Uh, if that's something you would like to do to resolve this, not, not so much resolve this particular issue, because as Mr. Gunsberg said, this project itself is completed. But going forward, uh, how does the town want to address these types of issues where there is a conflict? I, I think that's the question here. Um, and under the procedure that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in two thousand seventeen, uh, this board is, is hearing Mr. Gunsberg's appeal. Uh, this board will also need to issue a written, um, a decision or, or written findings and make recommendations. Uh, so, a- and I have to say, this is the first time, uh, that this procedure is being used. Uh, so it's the first time for all of us. Uh, but, but you sit here as, as sort of the judge or the judges and you have to look at this situation. And then if you're inclined to say, you know, it might be good for the town to have a policy, then certainly that's within your purview and, and you can certainly say, let's, let's work on a policy together with Mr. Gunsberg, his committee, the ADA coordinator. So we're all on the same page.
Thank you, that was super, super helpful for me, anyway.
Thank, thank you, I'm gonna, and I, I.
Right, can I, can I say one more thing, please?
Sure, and then I want to, I'll wrap it up with that.
Uh, no, we're running late and I've got. But look, the, there was a question before about, about being sued when a tree goes down. The only time that you can get sued when a tree goes down is if the, if the tree warden is involved and puts a red sign on the tree and says that we're putting this tree up there and we're, we're, we're saying we would like to take it down and we're asking for the public. If you don't put a red tag on the tree, you don't have a hearing. If you don't have a hearing, you don't go to local court. It's a federal issue. These are federally prescribed, federally mandated civil rights that are being abridged. that are being abridged by a law that predates the law that I'm talking about by 30 years. There is no, there is no qualifications that the tree warden brings to any discussion going forward that is germane to whether or not a crosswalk, a sidewalk, or anything is accessible to people with disabilities. So I would ask again that we build a policy, that we build it with the right people, maybe my committee. I'm not even asking for that. I think the ADA coordinator and DPW have more than enough background and information to figure out whether or not there's another way to do something. So I'll rest my case there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Alan. So yeah, I mean, what Amina said, you know, where there is a conflict, federal law will prevail. But certainly, you know, we have to buy by the state statute with the tree warden. So I'm gonna brought up the, you know, my idea about working on a system with, you know, the permit system and streamlining that, and getting everybody on the same page, so we're not working in silos. And I had mentioned this too, the tree warden being involved with that. Just so everybody's on the same page, and so we don't get to these things sometimes in this situation. Again, what happened, I thought, regardless of what happened at that meeting, and again, if they did that Alan, that's absolutely wrong. I wasn't there, so I can't comment that much on other than what you told me. But the result was, I thought, a good one. And so they are working together, collaborating, as Dr. Kramer said. So I think there is room here to improve this system. So we are not in conflict of state statute or federal law, and that we work together with a balanced approach that protects the federally protected rights of our citizens, and also, you know, protects a tree that could be saved if nothing is, no rights are abridged. So I wanted to see if we can, you know, as Amina said, fit this into what I'm proposing with the streamline in the permit process and making sure that this is included in it. Unless there's any other ideas. But we will definitely, let's continue this conversation and see what we can come up with.
If I may just briefly, Mr. First Selectman. So I didn't mean that this, if the board is inclined to put together a policy with regard to trees and ADA issues, I didn't mean to suggest it should be part of a bigger policy. It could be separate, but that's a decision I think you as a board would give us direction on. So if you think it's something that has to be standalone, just to address these issues, we can certainly do that. Or if you believe it should be part of the bigger process that you're thinking of, that could be done as well, but we'll take direction from the board.
Yeah, I'm really serious about that, you know, streamlining the whole permit process. This could stand alone, I don't have an opinion on it right now. I want it, I think it absolutely has to be done. But there, you know, whether it's included in the overall reformation or just a standalone, you and I can maybe circle back, if not this afternoon, tomorrow at some point. We'll see what our schedules are and get working on it. Okay? Thank you.
I just want to be very clear on what our next steps are, because I believe, Amina, we have a return date to respond to Mr. Gunsberg's appeal.
Yes, so you have 15 calendar days. So by my count, that's July 8th. So by July 8th, this board would have to issue a written ruling or decision, you know, you can call it anything, but a written response to Mr. Gunsberg's appeal. So that might necessitate perhaps another discussion among the board and a drafting of a response to Mr. Gunsberg's appeal prior to that July 8th day.
Right, and given that this is sort of a process legal question, does that, does the drafting come out of the law department?
Yes, we are certainly here to help you, we'll take your input and do a draft.
Okay, just want to be clear as to
Absolutely.
How we're gonna actually implement the.
Yes, and we can have that discussion, and we're here to do the draft.
Terrific, thank you, Amina.
Thank you, Amina, thank you Jill. I looked at the calendar, our next meeting is July 8th. So we could talk tomorrow, but would be, could we wait until July 8th? Or you think we have to meet before then?
I would suggest having a meeting before then, so that when you get to July 8th, you know exactly where this is going.
Okay, so we'll get a special meeting just for this on the calendar. And we'll see what works for Jill and Lauren. Okay, thank you so much, Amina, I appreciate it. Alan, thank you for coming on, and Dr. Kramer.
Thank you guys, very much. Appreciate it, have a good day.
You too, thank you so much, and thank you Dr. Kramer, thank you Amina. Okay, last item before we go to a special meeting is a rescheduling of the July 22nd Board of Selectmen meeting to July 21st, and we have selectwoman Lauren Raven.
Yes, hi, I have a conflict with our scheduled meeting. The Western Connecticut Council of Governments is having a retreat to discuss the strategic, their strategic plan for the next three years. So on behalf of Fred, I'll be attending that in person in Ridgefield, Connecticut. So I am requesting that we reschedule our previously scheduled Board of Selectmen or Select Board meeting to the day before, July 21st.
Okay, I'm just looking on the 21st, and we can move, yeah. I'm okay, to 10 o'clock, I assume, we keep the same time. Jill, are you, if you look.
Yeah, I'm fine doing that. And I just unnoticed, especially as we're talking about moving to in person, I will likely, my son is going to college in August, and he's scheduled to move in sometime between the 18th and the 20th. So I know we have a Board of Selectmen, Select Board meeting scheduled for the 19th, and when I get more definitive dates, I will ask for a rescheduling of that Board of Selectmen meeting as well, so I'm fine with the 21st.
I could just jump in, Jill, the August meetings are this 12th and 26th, so in the clear.
I have the wrong dates in my calendar then. Okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if you need, again, just give us some notice, if you need a rescheduling, we'll gladly do it. So thank you, everybody, seeing no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I believe I just need a quick motion and vote on changing the meeting date from July 22nd to July 21st.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we reschedule our July 22nd, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting to July 21st, 2021.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, everybody, thanks so much for joining us, and have a great day.
I also need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Lauren Raven.
Jill Oberlander, second.
All in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you.
Bio break.
Thank you Barb, thank you, and thank you Jenny.